You're recording.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the pleasure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the Harrington Group, the Communicator Award. The Harrington Group has been recognized by the Communicator Awards, which describes itself as a leading international awards program recognizing excellence in communication across the spectrum of industries, championing effective and meaningful work. In May of twenty twenty-three, the Harrington Group received two awards for distinction of videos that they produced for LBI Arts and Sciences Foundation and Lacey Township. For the LBI Arts and Science, the Harrington Group won the award for distinctive in the fundraising category for an annual appeal video, which was very effective in helping the Long Beach Island Arts with fundraising goals for twenty twenty-two. The Harrington Group also won the award of distinction in the government relations category for Lacey's Township, our home video. This was one of the series of videos celebrating life in Lacey, specifically recognizing township departments and residents' successful responses to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Harrington Group and Lacey Township were recognized alongside other film and video winners such as Coca-Cola, NASA, PBS, AARP, Pepsi-Cola, Rolls-Royce, GAF, and more. The Harrington Group, which has been producing award-winning content in the form of video productions and commercials, social media, websites, and print since nineteen ninety-three, have won over ninety national and international awards for their work over the past thirty years. Some of the Harrington Group's corporate clients include Deutsche Bank, Morgan Stanley, Pfizer, Merck, Trump Entertainment Resorts, Lowe's Corporation, Sands Casino, Hollywood Casino, Daily News, New York Delaware River Port Authority, and more. Regional and local clients include Long Beach Island, Arts and Science, Lacey Township, New Jersey Seagirt, City Grant Consortium, Shore Memorial Hospital, RE/MAX on Long Beach Island, Ship Bottom Beach Patrol, Small Cakes of Long Beach Island, New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife, Garden State Hearing and Balance Center, and Southern Ocean Orthodontics, and more. The Communicator Award is in its twenty-ninth year and is received and sanctioned by the Academy of Interactive and Visual Arts, whose members include executives from Disney, ESPN, Amazon, Chelsea Pictures, Condi Nast, and more. Every year, approximately five thousand entries are received, making the Communicator Award one of the largest award shows, according to its website. Come on up. Come on up.
We've been utilizing the Harrington Group since approximately two thousand and nineteen on various public relations items, videos, if you've seen them on our YouTube channel or along our website, to get the word out about events and items that are in Lacey Township. So I have to thank them. They've done a lot of good for us and gotten the word out there for us, so.
And let me just say how they got us was a cold call. I happened to be the mayor at the time, was sitting in the office, and one of the clerks said, would you take this call? And I said, well, I'll take any call. And then turned to the Harrington Group, made no promises. They came up and talked to us a couple of times, and here they are several years later. They're doing outstanding work.
Thank you.
This is the Communicator Award. Is it in the next box?
Oh, it's our Emmy. It's an Emmy. It's an Emmy, yeah.
Thank you.
That's beautiful.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, if anyone wants to see the video, if you go to the YouTube channel, it's the first one that comes up. We could have picked almost any of the videos, but we picked that one because it encompassed all the stuff we were talking about at the time. It encompassed what was going on with COVID-19. We talked about all the activities on the town, so we thought it showed everything really nicely.
Wonderful. Very nice.
Make your pitch up.
Come on up. You're part of the Harrington Group, too.
She's just the president.
Just the president. Just the president.
Are you ready? Smile for the yank. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still look good on my bookshelf.
Very nice.
Okay. Now to the boring stuff. Number two on the agenda is the bond anticipation note.
As required by law, I have to notify the governing body that the Township of Lacey sold bond anticipation notes, which we do annually every May, in the amount of sixteen million, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. They were sold to CD and Company at bearing an interest rate of five percent. These will be expiring next May, and when we will sell them again, and obviously it's going to be a lesser amount. So I have nothing to add on. If we can adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right into the regular meeting. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, authorizing a grant of easements for the installation of underground electrical improvements in construction and maintenance easements for block one zero zero zero, lot one.
In accordance with the Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing a grant of easements for the installation of underground electrical improvements and construction and maintenance easements for block one thousand, lot one. Block one thousand, lot one is the railroad right-of-way, which is right next to the Holtek Oyster Creek site. This is for Ocean Wind to run their cabling and wires underneath the right-of-way. So second reading up on the floor to public comment. Any public comment?
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing the execution of grant of access easement for block one thousand and lot one.
In accordance with the Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a grant of access easements for block one thousand, lot one. So one is granting the easement. The other one is allowing them to access the area and the easement for the same parcel. Second reading up on the floor and any public comment?
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township.
In accordance with the Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled in accordance with the Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is making a salary adjustment for the director of community development and the zoning officer. Second reading up on the floor. Any public comment?
See?
No.
Step up to the mic.
Just state your name.
Is there a percentage of increase?
I don't have the percentage off the top of my head.
Well, for the community service director, do you know how much it's going up?
Totally. Between the two positions, it's going up, I'll tell you in a minute, seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars over the previous year's salary?
Over the current salary.
Okay. Is that increased benefits, too, or just salary?
That person does not take benefits from the township.
Okay, so there's no benefits. It's just salary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, amending chapter seventy-nine of the Township Code entitled officers and employees so as to amend the section entitled duties.
In accordance with the Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter seventy-nine of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled officers and employees so as to amend section seventy-nine dash two seventeen entitled duties. And this is the duties of the code enforcement officer, and that the code enforcement officer shall perform the duties in accordance with what's on file, and they shall be directed to answer to the township committee or their designee. Second reading up on the floor. Any comments?
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-six, urging the Board of Public Utilities to designate an individual from Ocean County.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, urging the Board of Public Utilities to designate a qualified individual from Ocean County in order to assure fair representation of Ocean County on the board. Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-seven, appointing special project engineers.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, appointing ACT engineers as a special project engineer for the Township of Lacey. ACT engineering is being brought on this year to assist us with our dredging issues in the lagoons and the riverways.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-eight, authorizing the execution of agreement with Dilworth Paxson as bond counsel.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Megan Ann Bennett of Dilworth Paxson LLP as bond counsel for the Township of Lacey. Block Warath is our current bond counsel. They were sold to Dilworth Paxson, so we're just making the change. It's the same representation.
Second.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-nine, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing a medical leave of absence for Kazmiru Kenka under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, awarding a contract to Northwest Barnegat Pines Phase Three Road Improvement Project.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Earl Asphalt Company for the Northwest Barnegat Pines Phase Three Improvement Project. The total amount of this project is six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and thirteen cents. The three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of this is under the New Jersey DOT Municipal Aid Grant. So there was a proposal A. We broke it down into sections, just in case there wasn't enough funding based on the award. So it's proposal A, proposal B, and proposal C. Proposal A includes Baldwin Street, Windsor Street, Tappan Street, which are all part of the New Jersey Municipal Aid Grant. Proposal B is Lakeside Drive North and Windsor Place, and proposal C is Stephanie Court, which is down in the beach right after the first bridge. Came in at a very, very good price. I believe the asphalt tonnage was eighty-five dollars a ton, and we haven't seen that in quite some time. It's usually about a hundred and fifty, one seventy-five.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, amending an agreement for CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, amending a contract with Selagi Contracting LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program. The initial project was awarded in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars based on some electrical issues in this qualified COA housing. We needed to do a change order to correct some of the issues. It's an additional one thousand, fifty-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Excuse me. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, authorizing a chapter one fifty-nine.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA four forty A colon four dash eighty-seven. If you recently read the newspapers, you have noticed that Lacey Township received a portion of a grant under the local recreation improvement grant. We had put in a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request to do improvements to the back of Hebrew Park, the pavilion, the bathroom, the walking path, so on and so forth. We received sixty-three thousand dollars, about ten percent. But in order for us to spend it this year, we need to place it in the budget.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Excuse me. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-three, authorizing a chapter one fifty-nine.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty eight colon four dash eighty-seven. Again, at the time of the budget, we were not notified by the state of New Jersey for our annual clean communities grant program. We have since been notified. In order to spend it, and this year's budget has to be placed in there. The amount that we received this year for our clean communities grant program is eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and one cent.
Second.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due for property acquired by the United States Department of Interior.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the tax budget to cancel taxes due for property acquired by the United States Department of Interior. This is a marshland lot all the way out beyond Bayberry Village, out in the waterways. The amount to be canceled is a hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due for properties acquired by the Township of Lacey.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the tax budget to cancel taxes due for properties acquired by the Township of Lacey. These are all properties in block eighteen fifty-two and eighteen fifty-three, which is part of phase three of the Walters Development Group.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, refund of deposit loans.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-seven, authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of four million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Sorry.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move it. I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes from May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have two add-ons this evening. One is resolution one eighty-eight. It's a resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Naim Calhoun.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Next is resolution one eighty-nine. It's a resolution to Township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Richard Tupper.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cartolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes.
All I have to add.
Thank you. Comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to hope, you know, hope everybody has a safe and healthy Memorial Day, and just take time to honor the memory of the people that gave their lives to defend American values and freedoms, you know, that we so cherish. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Committeewoman Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, we have a beautiful parade coming up on Monday. Make sure you come out and support it. It's good to see the people out there. It starts at, lineup is nine-thirty down at the Methodist Church, and we'll end up out here at our Veterans Wall and have a nice service. Other than that, the only other thing I'd like to say is on Sunday, I'll be celebrating forty-five years of marriage.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Not bad, huh?
Not bad.
Commissaryman Dykoff?
Thank you. Well, along those lines, everyone, a lot of people don't know of Memorial Day. It's just like they don't know why we celebrate Veterans Day. So Memorial Day, we honor those who lost their lives while defending their country. And then I remember when we have Veterans Day, you know, do you say happy Veterans Day, have a good Veterans Day, just like Memorial Day. Is it proper to say happy Memorial Day? Well, before the internet. Yes, of course you can, especially if it comes from a place of grateful joy for the life we live today that was provided by the sacrifices of generations before. On Memorial Day, take the time to reflect on the men and women who gave all for us. So please have a happy, healthy, and safe Memorial Day.
Thank you. Commissaryman Cartolo?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Like my colleague said, thank a veteran, thank somebody. So many lost somebody in our wars and our conflicts over the years, and it's sad. It's more than just buying a poppy. It's something that we should be thinking of every day. But for our veterans and those we lost, we're not speaking English here today. We're speaking a different language, or there was a different outcome in one of the wars. So eternally grateful. Our municipal alliance lunch is tomorrow at twelve noon at our new community hall center on East Lacey Road. If you get an opportunity, there are some great seniors there and some, really, the bread and butter of the town, good people, all. And closing comments tonight, some really good news about our town. I didn't expect to find it. I was on a Zoom call at my employer, County Health Department. I was on with the State Health Department and the State Department of Environmental Protection. If you go on the State Health Department's website and you just Google municipal reports, and then click on the Ocean County icon, and it shows all of our municipalities. Click on Lacey. It's remarkable. When you talk about the air quality, the water quality, the amount of protected pine lands and space that we have preserved here, it's kind of easy to see that in a business climate that colleagues have all had a hand in, making fertile ground to grow our economy here. You know, it's proof positive here in Lacey that the economy can grow, and we still care about the ecology. Our bathing beach where the whippet is, didn't see one exceedance last year in Lake Barnegat. So it's a remarkable story. It's emblematic of why property values continue to rise in our town. And it's something that everyone in this room and outside of this room can be proud of. And thank you, Mayor. That's my comments.
Thank you. Commissaryman Cartolo. Okay. Also, Memorial Day, nine-thirty, the parade starts. It's a solemn parade. And then we come up here for...
Services.
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 Services. Thank you. Services. Also, I also want to, a few weeks ago, I was talking to Mayor Amato, and he had talked to us about, he was talking about senior freeze. So I looked it up. And I'd heard about this. I dealt with it with some of my clients when I was working. And I looked at it again, and I would encourage everybody to go look at this. If you're retired, getting social security, go look at this, because the 2022 income levels is ninety-nine thousand dollars and change.
However, it all is predicated on what the governor sets in the budget. So most of the time, it gets reduced down to seventy.
Okay. But right now, it's at ninety-nine thousand. Get your application. Thank you for ruining my surprise there.
I don't want people to be...
You know what?
...disillusioned to say that the mayor said it was ninety-nine, and I got denied.
Oh, I said, go on the internet. Go on the web. Thanks, Veronica. Okay. Also, tomorrow, it's back. It's the farmer's market down at the Methodist Church on Fridays. Usually have some pretty good stuff down there. And also, we will not be here the next time, but we do have a primary election coming up. So get out and do your constitutional duty and vote for the candidates of your choice. And that's all I have. Comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Just, yeah, Tony, if you can move the microphone while you're at it, that'd be great.
Thanks, Tony. John, as always.
Well, once a year, I come here to invite the committee members to be our judges for our doggy derby contests that we have. And that's what I'm here for this evening, to invite all of the members to come and be the judges for this contest.
I'll be there, Tony.
What's the date on the twenty?
It's June fourth. That's on a Sunday. And this is our doggy derby slash family fun day event that we have. It's growing and growing. Every year seems to get bigger and bigger. We have a following of over a thousand people that come. This year, vendors, we have over fifty vendors of all kinds, not just dog-related, like, you know, just general crafts, et cetera. So it's a great day for the family, because it's more than just dogs. WB&J will be there. They'll be broadcasting from the field. In addition to that, we have about a half a dozen food vendors that will be serving some nice foods, desserts, ice cream, and main dishes, et cetera. We have demonstrations going on. We have a karate group that comes in and does a karate demonstration at Kung Soon School of Karate. We have a cheerleading demonstration from the Pride Elite Competitive Chair Company. We also have the Ocean County Sheriff's Department. They'll do a drone demonstration, as well as put their canine dogs to work for us. So it's a fun, fun, fun day. And, you know, the contests, just to let you know, they have the most happy dog, the best dressed dog, the best tricked dog, and the owner look-alike. You know, we used to have the best... We used to have the best kisser, too. But actually, the dogs don't like it. I'm not saying why. They just weren't for it anymore, you know?
Unfortunately, Tony, that's the day my grandson's getting baptized, so I will not be there.
I was there last year.
What are the hours?
What are the hours, Tony?
It's going to be from eleven until three.
Eleven and three. Okay.
And it's at Jones's Road Bar, obviously, where we have it every year. And this is our tenth annual event.
Yeah, I can't believe it's ten years. Yeah, I can't believe it's 10 years already.
It's been a year, it's going very well.
Yes, it has.
Hope all of you, or most of you can attend and be the judges. I appear to have been a judge many times. Peggy Sue has been as well, you know, Timmy has been also, so.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Powers, you're welcome as well. So that's my spiel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Hope you have a great one.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Tony, come on down.
Tony Rizzoli. Couple of things. First, I'd like to say that the service that you folks run every Memorial Day here is a really nice service. The parade is important because you throw candy and stuff. But the service itself, being a son of an ex POW whose father was president of the ex POWs in the state. And having grown up with generals and colonels and a lot of ex POWs in my house when I was growing up and having a son that serves. It's, it's a very meaningful service.
Yes, it is.
And the last time I came, I brought my grandson, okay? And I think it's very important for people to know that we have to instill in our grandkids what these people did for us. So it's, yeah, we may know, but we should try to pass that legacy on, more importantly, to those who follow us. So that they know when they're looking at their iPhones and they're saying, well, I have freedom of speech, you know? And I don't live in a, under a communistic society or fascist society. This is the reason why, because of those sacrifices. So the service is very important, more important for our kids and our grandkids than really for us who, who are here.
You know what, Tony? Just to tell you one thing, I forgot to mention this. Over at the middle school, our social studies classes went out and we lined our entire front lawn with American flags. It's really beautiful if you have the opportunity to just ride by.
Well, those are important things as future citizens and possibly future Republicans. I'm here, I guess because I'm a concerned citizen, mostly for waterfront people. Now, the last time I was here, Veronica, I asked you a question about an easement that was never, never written down or recorded. And it was a pipe there or something that had to be put in. And I asked the question, well, what happens, you know, with this pipe in the future?
This was on Laura Boulevard, right? This was on Laura Boulevard, if I'm not mistaken.
Might have been. And he said, well, it's our responsibility to make it whole and, you know. So the reason I'm here is, quite a while ago, before that, I asked the person from the Department of Public Works to come out to my site on Sunrise Boulevard. Now Sunrise Boulevard butts to the Edwin Foresight Wildlife Management Area. And underneath Sunrise Boulevard, there are drainage pipes, okay? That run from the wetlands to the canals and there's seven, seven of those. In the past, the head of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Casey Parker, if there was ever some kind of a problem with that, it's the, he knew then, as it is now, because I do not believe it's changed, that it's the responsibility of the road department to take care of whatever drainage situations are negative and occur, okay? And they were. So I called and I asked for this person to come out to observe what's happening. And, and what is happening since the installation of a new type of pipe that was put in? There was loss of land. The land is sholing into the lagoon. So I wanted him to come out and observe. I forget the guy's name, person's name, but he claimed to be the person in charge. And therefore, I figured he had at least minimum intelligence, you know, and be able to look and see with firsthand knowledge of exactly what's happening. And he brought along a younger fellow who he claimed was an engineering type person. And this guy's head did whatever that person in charge said, which I looked at, being an HR guy, and didn't quite believe that he was really giving an honest opinion, in my opinion. So I asked, what can be done right off the bat? Not our problem. Not our problem. It's your problem. You have to have, it's your problem because it has to do with your bulkhead on your property.
That's correct, 100% correct. It's not the pipe's problem, it's the bulkhead problem and the bulkhead.
How do you know it's the bulkhead problem, Veronica?
Because they looked at the bulkhead.
They did, didn't they? And it's my bulkhead that's the problem.
And I believe a portion of the bulkhead was replaced, but not the portion on the easement. And the easement belongs to the property owners. We just have a right of access.
Back when I lost my house, okay, to Sandy, and your building department approved my, my.
Rebuild, rehab, whatever, right.
Okay? It doesn't show that, that piece of property I own, okay? So you're saying it's my bulkhead and my problem, but my plot plan, which your engineering department approved for me to build a replacement home, says it's not my property. So if it's not my property, why is it my problem?
There's no separate block and lot between your property and your adjoining property owner. So you, you guys share. So that pipe is in the middle, split between the two properties. It's an easement. It's not a separate block and lot like some of them are down in Parker's Point and stuff like that.
Well, why was it replaced by the township and taken care of in the past? Why was that president set?
Pipe was replaced, not the bulkhead. We have replaced pipes in the past and we do return the property to the condition that it was in, but we don't replace the bulkhead. Now, there are times when the bulkheaders will come in and replace property owners' bulkheads. And they will reach out to the town and say, hey, while we're there, we, we suggest we put in a new pipe. We will supply the bulkheader with the pipe and they put in the bulkhead and then put in the new pipe.
I was told about that by this individual. And I said, I still don't understand why it's my problem.
Because it's your bulkhead, it's not ours. You actually pay taxes on that portion of the property.
That I can't use.
Well, you can't put permanent structures on it, but you can use it.
And why does my plot plan show that I don't own?
I can't answer why the engineer you hired didn't pick it up when he did the search. I can't answer that.
But I pay taxes on what I'm showing that I don't own.
You do own it. You do own it.
On a tax map, I own it, not on my plot plan.
Well, I can't answer what your engineer did. I don't know, your engineer could have, did it incorrectly. I can't answer that.
Well, why did your, why did your building department pass it then if the plot plan was wrong?
They go by the certified survey that you supplied. And they're assuming that the licensed individual that provided you with the survey did the correct work.
Okay, so you're going to stand behind the observation made from the ground level, looking down, saying it's definitely, without any question of a doubt, it's that bulkhead that's creating this problem. Yes or no?
That's what the two individuals said.
Okay, then why is it also creating the problem from anchor to Four Peak? The same problem between Four Peak.
You're right. And we have two instances where it is.
And wave and span.
And again, we have two instances.
You've got three bulkheads failing and it's, it's just my bulkhead. It's not anything to do with the installation. Does not seem logical to me. How can that be? How can that be?
I can't answer how can that be, but there are three instances down there right now that we are having, I'm going to call it sinkholes, and that they're losing dirt because of the condition of the bulkhead.
Okay, what happens if all three continue to lose dirt? And now it affects the road. What happens?
The town will go in and repair the road.
Thank you, repair the road. I'm not fixing the bulkhead.
Anybody else in the public? Come on down.
Steve Borl, Fork of River. I'm here on behalf of the taxpayers who oppose the new complex that the township is working on, whether they know it or not. I ask around town every day. I'm retired and generally, the people, most of them don't even know about it. But anyways, I'm here to speak for them. And I want to know since last meeting, if there's any updates, any meetings, what the subject matter was of the meeting. And I want to confirm that Johnson Controls is the company that is going to be hired to build this.
Yes.
Johnson Controls.
Okay. I had, I want to give the mayor a courtesy copy and the township a term, right? That's where you are, right? Okay.
At the last meeting, I identified this company as having a headquarters in Ireland. Since then, I really researched them because there was a little controversy because you guys said they were from Minnesota. So if you read the second paragraph, it says, "The company was formed by the merger of American company Johnson Controls with Tyco International, announced on the 25th of January 2016. The mayor led, the merger led to the avoidance of taxation on foreign market operations and a financial windfall for the CEO of Johnson's Control." So this six-page document talks about business, women's rights, subsequent history, history, business units. Well, what I found interesting is when I turned to page five, on page five, at the bottom, it had, it talks about controversies. And it talks about the actual merger that this company that the township wants to hire merged and moved their company headquarters to Cork Island. "The merger was completed in 2016. Merging with the Irish company allowed Johnson's Control to become an Irish company itself and enjoy sharply lowered corporate taxes, a process known as tax inversion. This restructuring came at great expense to the workforce, blah, 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 that they reduced their workforce." Now on the page six, I'm actually going to quote Hillary Clinton for the first and probably the last time in my life. "Hillary Clinton condemned the company for wanting to escape United States taxes through the merger of having begged the government for financial help in 2008. The Johnson deal termed outrageous by Fortune magazine, qualified as a super inversion because Tyco shareholders will own 44% of the company, thus avoiding penalties that the United States Department of Treasury has imposed on other aversion deals. The firm estimated that it would save about $150 million a year by avoiding American taxes." And then you go down. It talks about the scandal you guys could read about. It was a scandal, stealing money and other underlying things. At the very bottom, it talks about bribery charges in China. "In 2016, Johnson Controls agreed to pay $14.4 million to settle Foreign Corruption Practice Act charges with the SEC. According to the SEC, employees of China Marine, a subsidy of Johnson Controls, employed sham vendors to transfer $4.9 million worth of bribes to Chinese government-owned shipyards to win over businesses and enrich themselves." Mr. Mayor, are you aware of this?
No, not.
Mr. Attorney, are you aware of this? Could you research this company for us? And I want to ask you some questions about it next meeting, please.
I only do what I'm asked to do by the governing body.
Okay, well.
Well, let me just say, if you remember correctly, in 2016, Johnson Controls was not the only company out there doing tax inversion.
That's besides the.
Wait, no, no. No, no, it is the point. Because there were a whole lot of companies out there doing that because the United States corporate tax structure was exceedingly high. And Ireland decided to lower it. So all they did was transfer their headquarters to Ireland, period. It's done all the time.
So it's not a foreign company?
No.
So when they build this thing, are they going to save tax money?
What's that?
Are they saving tax money?
Yes.
Okay, but we're going to pay more tax money, the taxpayers.
How, how are we paying more taxes?
Well, we got, someone's, we got to pay for the building, right?
You're making the argument that they can do the product cheaper than anyone else because they don't have the same tax obligation other corporations make.
Well, that's an assumption. Okay? That's what you're saying. I'm only reading the facts.
All right.
And it's a, I wouldn't employ this company.
Wouldn't you agree that if a company is saving costs in one area, that it has the opportunity to provide a product at a cheaper cost?
Okay.
That's reasonable, right? It's logical.
And it's legal for you guys to hire this company?
Yes. If it wasn't legal, we wouldn't hire it.
Oh, I don't know. I'm asking.
They wouldn't have the license to do business.
Now, at the last meeting, I made a proposal that anything over a million dollars that you guys want to do has got to go for taxpayer vote. I asked each one of yous, you said no, right? So we talked a little bit about the new project and how we can maneuver without having the public vote on it, right? That you could unilaterally agree to make this 50 million plus building complex without township vote by staying under the 2% per year tax increase that is a state law. Is that what we're going to do?
Well, okay.
That's what was said to me last meeting.
We're going to follow the law on P3 projects. That's exactly what we're going to do. We hope to stay under the 2% because if not, we got a real problem.
Well, if you don't stay under the 2%, you have to go out to a referendum for the public to vote on it if you want to go above 2%.
Let's say, let's say that somehow you guys come in under the 2%, okay? And then a year from now, you need 10 new police cars that are going to cause and put you over the 2%.
No, the police cars are bonded.
Is it 2%? Hold on. Is it 2% for everything?
No.
Or two, I'm, I'm, can I ask the attorney, please? Can I ask the attorney? Is it 2% for everything in a year? No. So how much is it?
I'm not off the top of my head, I don't know.
So you can go under 2% to put the complex through and then buy whatever you want and go way beyond the 2% for that financial year? I'm asking the attorney.
Well, wait, no, 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 hold on here, hold on. She's the one who runs the town. She's the one that does all this. She knows better than he does.
Really?
Yes.
She knows more than the attorney?
About running this town? Absolutely. It's not even close.
Well, I'm asking who I think should be qualified to answer the question.
Chris knows budget. Chris knows budget.
For one minute, for one minute. First of all, sir, I represent the township.
Okay.
And any questions that are posed to me are posed through the mayor.
Okay.
So citizens just can't come up here and.
So you're, we're not allowed to talk to you?
It's not that you're not allowed, it's just that the governing body is, this is the chair of the meeting right here, okay? And he receives the questions. And if he wants me to answer a question, I'll answer the question. If I don't know, I'll say I don't know and I'll research it. But I just think from a practical standpoint, if it really answers you want, the individual that's sitting here, the chief executive officer of the operation, is extremely knowledgeable about Lacy's budget and how the cap law affects Lacy's budget specifically. And she has that institutional knowledge that I don't have, that I might have to research after I leave here. So if you're looking for an answer to your, genuinely looking for an answer to your question, I mean, just not pose a question, but you really want the answer, the best answer you're going to get is from the chief executive officer.
You know, I take exception to that. Why would I ask a question that I don't want that? I don't really want the answer. Well, that's what you're insinuating.
You don't have to be arguing, okay? You're looking for an argument. I'm not going to engage in an argument.
I'm not looking for an argument. I'm looking for answers.
But you, you try to talk over everybody, it's not going to work that way, okay? So if there are questions that the governing body has to answer me, they will ask me, okay? That's how it works.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Has there been any other meetings since the last township meeting with Johnson or the state?
With Johnson or the state?
Or Johnson or the state?
No, no, no.
That's who you're meeting with?
No, no.
And there's no record of the amount of money that it would cost to fix this building?
We're supposed to get that next week.
Next week.
Veronica was on the phone with them today, not happy with them. Let it, no, let it be known we weren't happy with it, it's taking forever. And they promised us next week. We will hold them to that.
Okay. So you're, you said that once you get it, you're going to read it at the township?
No, I didn't say that.
No.
No, 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 I never said that. We will review it.
Review it.
It's a draft, I believe, coming in. The first one's going to be a draft, then we will meet probably via phone conference with them and go over it. Because we're not going to put that out unless we know every little sentence on there so we can answer the questions that you have.
Okay. I would like to review it too before the next township meeting. Would I get an opportunity?
Not until the whole committee gets it. Not until the whole committee reviews it.
Okay. So after the next.
And we discuss it, and we discuss it.
As a matter of real estate.
A matter of real estate.
A matter of what?
Real estate.
Real estate.
Okay. So after, at some point, I'm going to be able to look at the documents.
Yes.
Because I'd rather come here more prepared to ask questions about the renovation of this building. As so much like, I looked into Barnicot is building a new municipal complex. Now online, it says that only costs $14 million. I don't know if that's true, but that's what it says online. So there is quite a difference between 14, and they're building a new police station too. There's a police station involved.
It's all in the same building.
Excuse me?
It's all in the same building. Barnicot's police station and municipal building are all one building.
Oh, okay. Whatever. I'm just saying, it's 14 million and it said in there that they're selling bonds to finance it.
Yep.
And if this goes through, are there going to be a bond sale or just tax money to pay for it?
For who?
For Johnson building a new complex here.
It'll be a.
Or is there going to be a bond sale or just paid for by the taxpayers?
Well, Johnson Controls, we will pay Johnson Controls. They fund it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about us.
No, we won't bond for, we won't bond for Johnson.
So there'll be no bonds?
So they are going to, as I explained the last meeting, if you care to listen to me, they are our landlord. We rented from them. And there are ways to offset it to make it cost neutral to the taxpayers by, one, getting a tenant in the building. We're looking to do more than just the municipal building. We're also looking to do an indoor rec center. Barnicot's not doing that. And Barnicot's square footage is, I believe, 15,000 square foot for their municipal building at that money of 14 million and change, okay? So we are also engaging with a company that would like to be at our indoor rec center as our tenant. So they will most likely be paying the bill for that portion of it. There's also, we're looking for sponsorship opportunities with companies that might want to put, like I said last time, Whole Tech sponsors the indoor rec center, becomes Whole Tech, or Ocean Wind. And they pay a fee to do that, besides us being able to increase the amount of items that we offer to the public, like pickup pickleball games. And now you can come there and play pickleball in the indoor rec center and pay, you know, five bucks a game or something like that to, to offset any of the costs that would be sent to the taxpayers.
I'll reserve comment on that. So next meeting, we'll talk about it, the cost and everything, if you guys got it.
Well, probably not, because the only time we can meet. The only time we can meet in an executive session is when we have a meeting.
Okay.
Which will be the next meeting. So we have our executive sessions after our regular ones.
Okay.
We go with them. So probably won't be until July because we only have one meeting in June.
Okay. But it's upcoming?
Yes.
And no final decision has been made?
No.
Okay. I'll reserve my, rest of my questions.
I have one question for you. We will, we've said, come on up, make an appointment with me and Veronica and sit down and we'll go over everything.
Look, I came up here three times like a jerk to get something that wasn't given to me, okay?
Well, they didn't have it to give.
And I don't like, you know, that's what I've been told by other township guys. You know, get over and talk to this guy, you'll learn more about it. And I'm from, in my lifetime, if we all can't hear it, then I don't want to be the only one to hear it. This is all public information. This is all funded by taxpayers. And every single taxpayer, whether they're ignorant to the facts or not, have a right to know what they're paying for. There's laws that protect us.
Absolutely.
There's laws that protect us from, you know, the township, any township abusing the rights of us taxpayers and throwing our money into a bottomless pit.
No, you're absolutely right.
And I want to stay in Fork of River. That's why I'm at this podium. Because every three months, I come up here and hand a check for $1,851, 61. And it's never gone down. Every year it goes up.
All I'm saying is, it seems to me, sir, that you have a lot of misinformation. And you come up here and talk to them. Let me finish. And you come up here and talk, and let me finish.
Okay, tell me what misinformation...
Here we go, you're not gonna finish.
Tell me what misinformation I have, tell me. I need to know. What misinformation do I bring to this podium? Tell me.
The Johnson Controls, you didn't understand that today? Do it, the last couple...
What do you mean, I didn't understand it? That's why I asked you about it. I understand what it says.
All right, thank you. You have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. But if you're gonna say I come up here with misinformation, I came up here with a document that was printed off the computer about Johnson. It's not misinformation, I'm just questioning about it, and whether it's proper to employ such a company.
Okay, thank you.
It's not misinformation, I come here with facts, I study. Anybody else? Barry.
Way better, before you start.
Yeah.
Guess who didn't know where Historic Bay Avenue was?
No, 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 no.
I'm here, this guy?
Yeah. Okay, just, just wanted to...
No idea where it is, Barry.
Go ahead. I just had to say...
I'm not gonna make any comments. No comment. Anyway, I'm here to do my standard plug. August 12th, Relay for Life, we, the Survivor Lunch starts at noon. We usually say people come in at like 9:00, 10:00, I have to get there at 7:00, because people are waiting for me when I get there on that day. We're up to 13 teams. It'd be real nice if we could make it to 20, that would be a wonderful thing. Last year, we had 10. And everybody's welcome, anybody who's interested, and I still didn't send you the...
No, you didn't.
Calm down, calm down, we'll get the, don't worry.
I didn't say the word, but you know what word was coming out, the website and the, all the other stuff.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's coming. What's today?